Okay, all right, we are up and ready to go, Mr. Elder.
Christine, I just got a text from Lisa that Roger, Kim, and Lisa are on a different link. So they probably are on the second one. I'm gonna send the...
I can do it right now.
Oh, you'll do it? Thank you.
Tell them to go to their calendar.
It was Roger, Kim, Lisa, and Parker as well. Okay.
All right, so we're calling meeting order. And our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. If you'd all please join me. Do we have a flag?
Yep.
Coming up? Here it comes. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Mrs. Barney, I ask you to do the white call.
Certainly. Dr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Elder?
Yes. Here.
Mr. Farrell?
Here.
Mr. Fideli?
He's coming in right now. Here.
Mrs. Hogan?
Here.
Mrs. Henkel?
Here.
Mr. Curbs?
Here.
Mr. Ostrander?
Here.
Mr. Riggi?
Here, here.
Ms. Krainer? Mr. Taft?
Here.
Ms. Orr?
I'm here.
Mr. Dawkins?
I'm here.
Now, Ms. Orr, we'll turn it over to you regarding the graduation review, and Mr. Modi.
Good. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Elder. Welcome everyone who are watching us. Again, this is our latest virtual Board of Education meeting. And so we wanted to make sure that the timing of this was important towards our budget vote. And that's why it was moved from last Monday until this Monday. And then, most importantly, we are a few days away from the class of 2020 graduation time. So we've asked Mr. Modi to kind of just give us a brief overview of our plan for the drive-in movies this Thursday. Mr. Modi, I know I took a drive with you there the other day to lay out the plan. And really, the space is amazing, and we're so thankful for the Glen Drive-In. But I do know that you've been communicating with families and parents of the class of 2020. But that was important for anyone who's watching us today to be able to hear and for the Board of Education to hear. So I'll just turn it over to you, Pete.
Sure.
Talk away.
Sure. So I guess, first and foremost, we had to adjust our start time to later than what we're used to. Our start time for graduation is 9:00 PM. And the reason that we're starting that late is, you know, talking to the drive-in theater last week, they pointed out that we're in the part of the year that has the longest days. So if we start earlier than that, you know, we won't be able to see anything on the big screen. So we have moved forward with, I think, is a very good plan for our graduation ceremony. You know, essentially, it'll run very much like our regular graduation. The biggest difference is that kids will be in cars instead of in chairs, which, you know, given the heat of this time of year, they might not be that upset about because look at air conditioning and quality sound. So it runs essentially the same as it normally runs. We have, you know, the speeches from the class president, the valedictarian, Ms. Orr, myself, and the class-selected guest speaker, whose identity has been leaked through social media outlets, but I'm not gonna spill the beans on who it is here. So the basic format of it is that students are assigned spots in essentially alphabetical order. We'll have ushers that drive the family car or direct family cars to drive up to the stage, which will be located near the concession stand. You know, but we'll have students out about, you know, five deep before they graduate, at least six feet apart. And as the student walks the stage, the car drives with the student in front of the stage so they can take pictures or take a video of the student receiving their diploma. They'll come down the ramp, are handed or have their picture taken by our photographer, get back in their car, and then loop around back to their spot. We're hopeful with that system that we won't actually add that much time because the time it takes for students to walk the stage is not going to change. And I'm assuming, you know, we might add a little bit because we're juggling cars. But by and large, walking in with Ms. Orr and the other members of my staff who've been working on this, I think we're gonna be able to deliver as close to a regular graduation ceremony as we've normally delivered. Now, normally, I've spoken to the Board of Education about, you know, some of the specifics of graduation and your role and where you're standing. But the one thing I'm not entirely sure of yet is the size of my stage. So I would like to have you in your normal positions. And as soon as I see a stage set up, I'll know for sure what that will look like. But having you present to, you know, be there as students receive their diplomas, I think is always a very nice, a nice process for our students. And I know their families certainly appreciate it. I know I appreciate it. So that's what I'm looking to have you do for all that indicated that they are available and interested in attending. Is there any other major pieces that I'm not thinking of?
No, you know what?
We're gonna do staggered arrival times. So, you know, we have different parts of the alphabet arriving at different times just to deal with some of the traffic flow. You know, we have, we have a couple of surprises up our sleeves for the graduates. We've been trying to give them a surprise every week, essentially, since the beginning of May. And we have one or two left for the drive-in that I'm pretty excited about. But I think that covers most of the general flow.
But we'll still be in our caps and gowns, correct, Mr. Modi?
Yes, yes.
Because it's graduation ceremony. And, you know, I think that, obviously, the late start is important just so that way we can actually see everything that is going on. But we have definitely streamlined the process, so we don't have to take any longer than a normal ceremony for that. And so that's really our goal in this. I think I'm appreciative because there's been many parents that have gotten involved. There's been many community organizations that have donated things for this class. That I'm appreciative of Caitlin Hogan-Morgan and Mary Mann for the work that they've done as their class advisors to add the little special touches to this, to make it as unique as possible for the class of 2020 on that. You will be sending out information in regards to vehicles, et cetera, to the families, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
And it's also important to note, since Governor's regulations prohibits anyone not in the immediate household of a graduate, with the exception of split families, we know there's gonna be a lot of grandparents and family friends and relatives who are gonna wanna see this. So we do have a plan that it'll be, everything will be completely livestreamed. So anybody will be able to watch it from home or from their devices.
Great. What's on this, Modi?
A quick question?
Mm-hmm.
When are we supposed to arrive and where do we park and things of that nature?
Sure. Staff are going to park on the upper lot. I think it's actually screen one, but it's the one, if you bend to the Glen Drive-In. If you come in, it's the, as you come down the driveway, it's the screen to the left. And if you were there, I would say 8:30 or so, we should be fine, maybe even 8:45.
Okay.
Especially if it's warm. I completely understand being outside. I understand what it is like to have a mortarboard that is black and a black robe and be standing outside in the sun. So I don't have any extensive or complicated machinery that I need to worry about from the Board of Education. So that would be fine if that works for everyone else.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Modi? Well, Mr. Modi, I know that you're actually on your way for another walkthrough of the drive-in right now.
I am.
I won't make you stay for the rest of the board meeting. But I do appreciate the work that you've put into this. I know, not only for this event, but for all the special events at the end of the year for each class. I'm also very appreciative, and I know the board is, of the constant way you met with students every week as check-ins. And while maybe they weren't all fully there, many popped in at different times. And you really got to a lot of them to give them student voice during this time. And as we continue to say at each one of these things, really, one of the biggest things at the end of the year was about continuing our connections. And I know that you've done that in a million different ways with graduation being the culminating event. So thank you for the work that you've been putting in to make these end-of-year ceremonies so special.
I'm very happy. There's been a lot of people that have put a lot of hard work into this. So I'm just the front man who gets the smile on the camera. So you mentioned Mary Mann and Caitlin Hogan, but, I mean, just dozens of people are doing all the heavy lifting. And I think it's gonna culminate in something very nice for our graduates. Thank you.
Thanks.
Outstanding.
So, Mr. Elder, I think our next piece of information is the recognition of our student Board of Education representatives.
Yes.
We'll be, yes, we'll be giving a little bit of a virtual certificate, but we'll be sending certificates. But as the community knows, Lauren Krainer and Parker Taft were chosen this year to be our student representatives to the Board of Education. And, boy, it has been a different year for them and the work that they've been doing all around for that. And, Mr. Elder, we do have Parker Taft this evening with us. I don't know, Parker, if you wanted to share with the board how your end of the year has been going and, you know, your plans for the future and all that's left, or maybe anything you've learned from all of this.
Never take anything for granted is one thing I have learned from this experience. Never take anything for granted. And, you know, time is something that we need to cherish because it's gone in an instant. It's been a pleasure and an honor serving on the board with all of you over these past couple of months, as turbulent and unpredictable as they have been. And I'd like to thank you all for your hard work and diligence in trying to make both the senior year as best as it can in the current circumstances and continue the functioning of the everyday humdrum of the school district. So thank you.
Thank you, Parker. Best wishes as you move forward in your educational career.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
We look forward to giving you your diploma on Thursday night, Parker.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
We can move forward?
Yep.
Okay. We did receive the agenda minutes, items A and B. Are there any comments or questions? Yes?
Sorry, Bill, one more thing before we get to comments and questions. We did have a letter that was written to the board that we thought might be appropriate to share at the beginning of the meeting during this time to make sure that everyone heard that. Do you wanna read the letter? And I can read the message that we responded with.
Oh, sure. I thought we were gonna do it later, but I'll do it right now. Thank you. As Ms. Orr mentioned, we did receive a lovely letter. And the individual indicated that we could share that with the board and the community. And with that, I shall read that. "Sucklin's Falls Board of Education Members. I'm a 2005 graduate of South High. My mother was a 1975 grad, my grandmother a fourth-grade teacher at Ballard, my husband a 2008 grad. We now own a home in the district and plan to enroll our future children. I'd like to know, in light of the current social climate, how you can put your town members at ease and help us know that our children will be raised in an education system that teaches them the true, not whitewashed, history of Black people in our country. I also encourage you to speak about how you foster empowerment not only for our Black community, which is small, I know, but our white children who have voices to change the world. Each year, you graduate 200 students. There are 535 members of Congress. You could graduate close to half of them. How do you ensure that the students you're presiding over as the education board are ready for the responsibility of the future? I feel lucky and proud to be a Sucklin's Falls graduate. I hear about people who have never learned any Black history in their lives, and I feel sad for them. I hated history my whole life. I'm a numbers girl, but I remember learning it. I remember feeling sorry, guilty, and empowered. I want to make sure that as you, three board members who are earning votes this spring and the remaining members who still have time in your term are remembering that good is never good enough. Thank you for your time. I do not need or expect a response. Most of this is rhetorical in hopes that your next meeting, you will consider the lives of the underrepresented and your power to change the world, one student at a time." Ms. Orr?
Thanks, Mr. Elder, and obviously, thanks to that person, whether they're watching or not, that sent us that letter. I think for all of us over the past few weeks, you know, watching everything going on in the world around us, obviously, as educators, it becomes our top priority to have equity across the district. And I think those are the things that continue to drive us in our work. And so I just wanna share with everyone our response to not only this particular resident, but to all of our residents. "The Board of Education and I are heartbroken over the events that have taken place over the past few weeks in Minneapolis and across our country. We want to take the opportunity to remind our families and community about our beliefs as a school district. Our district is committed to continually striving toward equity inclusion for all and embracing diversity and social justice. We know that many families in our community are feeling pain and hurt as a result of these events. As we consider the three areas where we focus much of our work, safety, and health, and future-ready learning, we know that ensuring support in these areas help us develop students who are well-rounded citizens who will use their knowledge and power for the greater good. Part of our duty in preparing students for the future is giving them the tools and knowledge to recognize and fight systematic racism. This means we continue to consider the experiences students of color have in the education system as well as the disproportionate impact the pandemic is having on these communities. Our district will continue to work to ensure we are building safe environments where students can have meaningful conversation and learn about each other's differences in productive and respectful ways. Finally, as we continue to focus our energy and efforts toward developing more robust mental health supports, we will continue to consider how to make sure all of our students and families have the support they need while teaching our children how to interact appropriately with all individuals regardless of their skin, the color of their skin. So, as again, I thank that particular community member that wrote to us. And I thank you, Mr. Elder, for giving us the opportunity tonight to make sure that anyone watching hears our message."
Thank you, Ms. Orr. I believe we can now move into the agenda and the minutes of the evening. We did receive those, our items A and B. Is there a motion and a second to accept the agenda and minutes from our prior meeting as submitted?
Motion.
Motion from Kevin?
Second.
Second from Tam. Thank you. A roll call vote? Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fideli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Curbs?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move into the School Business Management, items C through O. Is there any comments, questions, or clarification?
Just a couple of comments on a few of the sections. Don't mind, Mr. Elder. You'll notice under letter F, we have several contracts that we are approving. One of them is with the County of Saratoga for our School Resource Officer Renewal Agreement. Even during these times, we've been working closely with our School Resource Officer doing bits, home checks, et cetera, with him. He's been with us for there. And we do feel comfortable with the training that our School Resource Officer has had through different school pieces that this is still a positive partnership for the future. You'll also be approving Gervin and Palazzo for our legal services again for next year. And then, lastly, I wanna point to is that we will be doing some, with Open Circle for our mental health capacities, we will enter into an agreement for virtual training for the 2020-21 year. Under letter G, yep, under letter G, is Proposition 1 of the school year general fund ballot, Proposition 2 of the purchase of buses, and Proposition 3, I'm sorry, and also of the Board of Election of the three candidates. So that is based on last week's votes and election results for that. Letter I, Audrey, do you wanna take a minute, please, and just talk about the summary of the district fund balance and reserve?
Certainly. As you know, we have planned to put a larger amount of unappropriated fund balance into next year, apply it towards next year's budget of $1.624,000 towards the budget. But what we did in the reserve review was make recommendations that we could put up to $500,000 in our capital and up to another $100,000 in our teachers' reserve system and our tax cert reserve, depending on where things fall out here in the next week with the end of the school year. That's certainly not as much as we normally transfer to our reserves, but hopefully, we can at least get some savings into those accounts to prepare for the future.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Barney. I think the rest is all pretty self-explanatory with those letters in that consent item, in those consent items.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Orr. Is there any further comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions, Bill.
Sure.
So I have questions on three different ones, but I'll just do them one at a time to make it easier. The first one is for letter F. I am delighted with the U.S. History Trip Plan to Washington, D.C. I am wondering about the cancellation policy, if there's a resurgence in COVID. If the cancellation clause that's in there will cover us because they have a pretty strict requirement in terms of what we would owe if we cancel anything closer than a year out.
Mr. Dawkins, I know you've been working with our teachers on that. Do you wanna answer?
Yeah, so I worked with Mrs. Guthyle on that. And she's gone above and beyond to make sure that everything is covered. The reason that we're planning it now is because this is actually when we could guarantee the spots so that moving ahead, we would be able to guarantee that the kids could go if that was able to happen. But just as this year where Mrs. Guthyle was able to work out the reimbursements for things, she's worked out with the 4-H Center where they stay and with the tour companies as well. She has personal relationships with those companies because of how long she's been doing it, that she's going to be able, she would be able to work out a reimbursement the way that she was able to work out this year. And so, you know, that's why we acted quickly is because she wanted to make sure she could get the best price before that got closed out.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just, from planning these things, I know it's tricky right now. The second question I have is with the bid awards. I was just curious. I know that summer painting one, there's no competing bid. Is that the norm? I didn't notice a bid, a competing bid for that.
Right. We did not have a competing bid. Actually, the company that has done the painting the last three or four years did not even bid. This is a completely new company. We haven't worked with them in the past. They did have all the proper paperwork. They're certified. They have a certificate of insurance. And hopefully, it goes well. We were very fortunate the last several years. I think that company did a very good job, and we're just hoping that it continues. It's just much for a company to come in and get the painting done. It's much more cost-efficient than us trying to do one classroom or one cafeteria at a time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The last question I have is probably also for Audrey. It's letter K, the revenue anticipation, oh, my goodness, I can't speak, revenue anticipation note. So I appreciate the edits you have to it. I guess I'm just wondering if you could talk a tiny bit about this, kind of why it's necessary. And then also, you've clarified that there's the president, that basically, the president of the school board is one of the decision-makers. And then it has the school business official as chief fiscal officer. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the school, all right. And then in section two, it says the school business official is authorized if the chief fiscal officer is not available, right?
I could change that, too. We took, our bond council actually gave us a draft of this resolution. Actually, we're hoping we don't need to do a RAN. We hope the state aid comes in. We hope our tax receipts are up. This is just a cautionary, just in case we have to go out and borrow money in case our revenues aren't there. The board would, if we do have to do that, the board absolutely would have to approve us going out and getting that RAN. This resolution just authorized that we could begin the planning phase if we need to go out for revenue anticipation note because the revenue that we would not have would be in September through November, December, which is when we collect our tax receipts, we get our first state aid payments. And if those payments aren't coming in on time, we will need to do something as far as making sure that we have enough cash flow to cover expenditures, salaries, utilities, all those type of things.
So let me, can I just ask you a question there also? Because the way I read it is, is it's authorizing, you know, the power to authorize the issuance of and to sell revenue anticipation notes. So it's not really a preparation thing. It's actually giving the authority to go do that. So I think that was my question was, where in there does it say that the board has to approve it prior to it actually being done? Because I don't, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but that's, it's just, that's how it's come across to me.
Well, Mr. Elder, if he was the president at the time, would have to sign all the paperwork authorizing the actual RAN. It's very similar to our ban resolutions that we do for our buses. We're saying, we can borrow this amount of money for buses. And Mr. Elder signs those documents, those agreements, and it go back and forth between our council, bond council, and also the dormitory authority or wherever we're borrowing the money from.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, like I said, I think the way it's worded is there's nothing in there that allows for us to approve it. I get that Bill will, but that's not a board approval. That's Bill approving, so.
We can certainly, I can clear that up with bond council tomorrow to see if there's a way that we can further define that. But as I said, I certainly hope that this doesn't have to come to fruition. I hope we don't have to borrow money.
Totally agree.
I hope it continues to come in and the tax revenue. But this was a recommendation from fiscal advisors and bond council to just have this as a preparation, just in case.
Got it.
I think, I think that Tam and Christine's part, if I may say, is that we're all in favor of that. But before we get enacted, we need to know what that dollar amount is.
Oh, sure.
Exactly.
And I think, I mean...
And I just think that, I don't think that document's reading that way, that it says that that's the way it's gonna happen. I'm saying, I'm not saying it's not gonna happen that way. I'm sure you guys will do it that way. But I'm just saying that document doesn't read that way. That's all I'm saying.
And I'm not reading it like it's long-term borrowing. This is just to cover short-term.
This year.
We're waiting for money to come in. The governor's allowed for particle payment on their school taxes. The governor is also, might be withholding anywhere from 10% to 20% of the promised state aid. So we gotta have some contingency in play. But I can appreciate you wanting to at least be made aware before any borrowing's done.
Yeah.
I'll contact them tomorrow, get some clarification, and follow it up in our Friday report.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
To these questions, though, if we are technically approving this language, aren't we? So is that problematic? Or should we pull this and put it in first thing in August? Is there any problem in getting the language correct and then voting on this in August?
I would recommend we did it in July.
July.
Oh, in July. I skipped the whole month of July, Audrey. Sorry. I meant July.
The reason we put it in with this is because we didn't know what was going to happen with tax revenues as well as state aid. Our tax revenues start to flow in September. But we could certainly do it in July and still be covered.
I think I would feel more comfortable if, just because I think it makes... I think I would feel more comfortable if, just because I think it makes it more complex if we're approving this language and then we have to go back and change the language. And that way we have it completely ironed out what the process would be. I don't know how others feel.
No, that's fine. Let's pull it and act on it in July.
The only issue would be that we still might not know the amount if we did have to do a RAN.
And that's okay, so long as we could enact what, you know, whatever the language of how the Board of Ed as a whole becomes alerted to, it would be the language that would be in there. So it wouldn't have the dollar amount. It would just have the process lined out, which is what Tom was alluding to.
Okay, I can certainly search that tomorrow, and we'll pull that.
Audrey, just as a follow-up to that, when we, and I think it's a smart move for us to pull it tonight. But I think when, as, when you're looking at this, one of the reasons why we do it this way is that, that feel of urgency. We cannot get the board together to vote on a RAN, and whatever has come down is now urgent. It gives the right to Mr. Elder to be able to sign off on that, because he knows that dollar amount. And then obviously, if he's not available, it gives the right to the business manager. So I also, when we look at that language, I want to be clear with our lawyers that we're not putting ourselves in a hole by saying that we, the whole board must vote on it, because there may be times when the timing of everything doesn't work out. So I think we should just check with Chris Lynn Chant as well. So when we write the language, we're very clear to our board, but also to our needs of the business department, that we're not, you know, we're not, our timelines aren't off on that.
That makes sense.
Yep, agree.
Thank you.
Good discussion. Is there any further comments or questions? There being none. May I motion to approve?
Motion.
Just items C through L except for K, which we're going to move for July meeting.
Motion.
Okay, was that Tom?
Yeah.
Tom and Kevin. Thank you very much. That's all right. I just want to make sure I got that in there. A motion from Tom, second by Kevin. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Moving to personnel, we have instructional personnel consent items P through Y. Comments or questions, please?
As you can see, it always becomes a busy spring in personnel world for that. Soon after this, when I look at letter P, obviously, we released the official retirement of Audrey to our community last Friday. And I do have with us Kevin Fittrell, which will introduce just as soon as we approve, to take over as the superintendent for business. And then we also have another administrative appointment, Breann Hazelton. This was previously a CSE director position. We made it assistant director, special education position, and we will invite her to a meeting in the future. And then the third one on this for administrative was Michael Hammond. I know there were questions. He is currently the assistant principal. He's currently the assistant principal as a teacher on assignment. Was not able to do all of the things as far as evaluations go. Now, through this, that he's passed his tests and we keep getting certified, he's now able to move into the administrative unit. But last year's year will count towards his tenure for that. You'll see, we have, we do have high school credit recovery appointments under letter S. We are recommending, under letter T, several teachers off tenure. Abdu, Matt Beck, Abby Brigham, Nicole Dutch, Caitlin Hogan Morgan, Lisa Jansen, Kalen Kessler, Kathleen Nickel. There were questions, and that's why it was not until the June meeting that we did decide to appoint these, because there were questions within the law that just recently through executive orders were able to be cleared up. And so we're happy to be able to recommend these teachers for tenure on that. Mr. Dawkins has been very busy with letter U. We did add a few instructional teacher leaders in based on the current teacher contacts. We were able to do that. We continue to find mentors for all of our people there on that. And then obviously, letter X is our coaching recommendations. I realize this is our second round now in the spring, when unfortunately, we have been virtual. We had no spring concert, spring contests. And I was actually just on a call again today, where the New York State Public Health Athletic Association Committee continues to work diligently on what athletics could look like for that. So yes, we're appointing with the idea that we're staying as positive as possible. But we do realize, and the coaches have heard from Mr. Greep, that some of those changes may be necessary, depending on what recommendations come for the fall on that. And then lastly, under letter Y, we did have a resignation. Katie Green, our social worker at Moreau Elementary, has chosen to leave the world of education, go into private work. So we wish her the best in all of our future endeavors.
Thank you, Mador. Is there any further comments or questions? There being none. May I have a motion to approve consent items P through Y?
Motion.
Is that Kevin? Okay. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yeah.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Under that instructional personnel, we have consent items Z through ZZ, I mean ZZ10.
One second, Mr. Elder. I'm sorry, before we get to that, Kevin, can you unmute and unvideo yourself? In this crazy world, we're all meeting in some way possible, but I did think it was important in this appointment to ensure that we had Kevin with us this evening. I know Mr. Elder has met him through the application process, but we're happy to have you here tonight.
Well, thank you. I'm very glad to be here.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
So our plan, Kevin and I have been working on, is that throughout the summer, we're going to try to get in person to kind of do some introductions around and to have conversations with that. So when we have that laid out, we'll be sure to include you on that. So if there's an opportunity for any of you to visit during the days he's in-house, we encourage all of you to do that.
That'd be great. Hopefully it'll only be 100 degrees instead of like, whatever it is. That's not fair.
Kevin, welcome aboard. Audrey, we're going to miss you.
And then, Mr. Dawkins, we can invite all of our new probationary teachers to one of our later meetings as well to kind of introduce them to the board altogether.
Great. Sounds good.
Would be good. Are there any further comments or questions? Kevin, I thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you.
It's very important to us that you did, and we're pleased that you did. So thank you.
I'm going to stick around for a little bit, if you don't mind.
Oh, no, please, no.
I'll turn the mute off.
No telling what might happen. You might get discouraged. You can never tell. All right, may I motion to approve consent items Z through ZZ10?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion from Lisa, second from?
Tom.
Dr. Dawson was second?
That sounds good.
Mr. Elder, I just have a couple of comments on this very long section. It is, we do have two, in letter Z, we do have two longtime people that will be retiring with us this year. Mr. Edward Potter, the building service advisor at the high school, and Mrs. Deb McNally, our stenographer, boss of the Moreau Building, pretty much, will be retiring there for that. So those retirements will be there. They will be missed. We are filling a position with our special education secretary with an in-house candidate of Donahue. So that's where you see she has a probationary and a resignation. So she will be moving from middle school, central office, to work with Special Ed on that, for that. You will see under Z6, we continue to work hard to get our buildings ready for whatever that may be. And that is why we are appointing summer technology appointments. And then Z7 is the transfers based on some of the abolishments of the 812 position to other positions there for that in those pieces. So, so those are the key ones there, and then there's a few extensions of other positions in the district from that. I apologize for throwing those in after the motions.
Okay, that's right. Thank you, Mador. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Riggi?
Yes. Thank you.
Moving on, we have special education's consent item Z through 11, Z11, rather. CPSC and CSE recommendations, of which there was a huge amount, all 160 some odd pages of that one. Is there any comments or questions? There being none, may I motion to approve those recommendations as submitted?
Motion.
Is that Kevin? I'm just not recognizing worth of darn. Who, was it Kevin the mover?
Where's Jeff? Jeff Riggi. Motion. Kim Henkel, second.
Thank you. Mr. Riggi moved. Kim Henkel approved, seconded. Thank you. All right, roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yeah.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you. Under educational items, we have consent items Z12 through ZZ14. 14. Comments or questions, please? Clarification?
I have a couple of comments. First of all.
Please.
Kevin, you know that our meetings don't normally have up to ZZ14, only our special meeting of June. So I don't want to scare anyone off on this meeting with this many things, but we like to save things, especially this year with this until this meeting. Z12, our Board of Education meeting schedule, that is there. We are planning the July meeting to remain virtual. If that need could change or if something changes, we will note that on there. And then in August, we will have a TBD. But with buildings closed right now and things happening, we want to continue to stay safe and to make sure we're in contact as much as possible on that. For ZZ13, these mergers have been ongoing mergers with the swimming program and our ice hockey program. On ZZ14, we are adopting tonight the policies around data privacy. One of the conversations that you'll see is, in our, in our July organizational meeting, we, last year, we started some particular wording of data officer and then assistant, where the superintendent would be the full officer and then Jerrylan would be the assistant. We are changing that language slightly in our July meeting, so that way she gets the DPO title to ensure that's there for that. But we still want it to be a two-pronged approach, and we're making sure that the adoption of this meets those components there. So that was really the only change from the second read into this one for that. Also, for our second read for 1225, we're going to get you a new one in your Friday report. I appreciate Christine has helped us make this more generic, because we do think it's important. With all the local education foundations, if Kindness Closet went to a 403C, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, we want to make sure that we're ready for any of those. So those are the two things there. And our policy committee does get the summer off of reading policies. We'll just be adopting these at the July meeting. No new policies there for that. I always try to make the policy committee smile at least two months out of the year, because the other 10, I know, are very hard in that, and I'm appreciative of the work they do to help us keep looking at these.
Thank you, Mador. And I echo your comments. I thank you so much, Policy Committee. That's, that's a lot of heavy lifting that you have to do on our behalf, and it's greatly appreciated. So thank you. May I have a motion, if there's no more further comments or questions? May I motion to approve consent items Z12 through ZZ14?
This is Christine's motion. Oh, I'll second it then.
Sorry.
Nope. Tom motion, Christine second.
Perfect. Roll call vote. Oh. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you very much. From a board president's standpoint, I wish to thank everyone in the community, our staff, who supported the budget so well. As I recall, I think we sent out something like 14,273 ballots, of which we had over 4,000 community members respond and vote favorably for the budget. And we greatly appreciate that and the efforts put forth to pass that budget during these difficult times. So I'd like that to be noted and with ultimate, ultimate thanks. Mador, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Also, our capital project, we have four and a half buildings completely closed. We'll be doing a lot of painting in one of our other buildings that is open when we start our painting this summer. But our capital project continues to move along with our weekly updates on different things. Right now, the only area that might be slightly behind in the summer work is our administrative offices, with some of the closures in, in the United States of some of the plants. Some of our materials that we need are behind schedule. But obviously, if that's the only area that is wrong, we can stay at Six Bluebird until they can get it right. And so we're happy that it's not affecting our student program in any way for that. We continue to also think about our future capital planning and our capital projects. We've been meeting regularly with CS Arch. We've been walking the middle school and reviewing some of our curricular planning at the middle school level on that, slow and steady in these times, but we always want to make sure we're ahead of the game in that. In July, Bill McMorde and myself will be giving a presentation on this year's capital project. As everyone knows, it was slated to end in 2020, which would, this year would have been the final summer of that. But because of some cost savings throughout the project in various areas, we are able to discuss the use of the leftover money for other things that were options from our original plan that the voters approved. But now we're able to finish some of the other work on there that we weren't eligible to finish. So we will be going in detail over that and what our next steps are for 2021 to close out this project. And really, our focus has been on what else can we give for students right now. And I think I look forward to the community hearing about that in July, about next summer. Because I think in times like these, whatever else we can do to add to student programs is going to be well-recognized and needed during this time. So that's where we are in capital project, and we will continue along our two paths there. My second bullet to talk about tonight is reopening or the idea of re, of school. I had the pleasure of sitting in a three-hour task force meeting with the State Education Department, and they kept us very busy this morning on that. They did the meeting through Zoom, so it was held very similar to how some of our meetings have been done in the district, where we had a whole group discussion, and then we were given a breakout room for each area that they were talked about, and then we met in there for over an hour, and then we came back and reported out on that. I seem to be part of the transportation, maintenance facilities, and food service subgroup in our BOCs and also in the state. So it was a very good conversation. There were people from all over the state in our task force. They took diligent notes. I had the opportunity, Shannon Tahoe, our interim commissioner, was also part of our subgroup for the first half hour of that. And she was definitely doing a lot of writing, a lot of thinking, a lot of summarizing for some of these things. The focus of the conversation was on the three models. Can we be completely in person, and what does that mean for all of those subgroups? Can we be completely virtual, and what does that mean for all the subgroups? And then what does a hybrid model feel like, and are there concerns from those there? There were other subgroups. There were other subgroups. There was one on special education, one on budget and fiscal, there was one on equity and digital access. There were two on health and safety subgroups, and so on. And so I think they were very thoughtful about the conversations they're having. State Ed is doing four of these, and our area was the third one, and the fourth one, I think, is coming in the next couple of days. So far, the task force one, all of those videos are posted on the State Ed website. If you search it, you can see all of the subgroup conversations in any of those areas. That's what I have been doing, is looking at all the other ones but transportation, because I sat in that one. So I'm just in to hear what some of the thoughts, ideas, and brainstorming around that for that. So I do think the conversation was good. I think it's, we have to hurry it along to some degree. I wish these had taken place even a few weeks ago. I think that would have helped us in the conversation. But I think, you know, the work that we're doing with our local BOSEs is aligned to the work that's going on there. Each day, a new state seems to give their recommendations. From California today was Wisconsin or in the last couple of days. So we continue with our subcommittees to work on what that looks like for us. As far as South Glens Falls goes with the topic of this, in order to close out the year, we wanted to make sure we were closing out the year for our students, but at the same time, we also wanted to make sure we were getting information out to our staff and to our parents on our first round of surveys. So we surveyed our staff, and we had over 250 people respond to our staff survey. And we'll be getting information and sharing information out on what their thoughts were around some of the questions that we asked. We sent a family survey out recently. We sent it out last week, and we did a reminder today because we're closing it. And I'm really proud of the fact that we had 956 respondents of parents from that survey. So I think if there's anything of the overall, the general comments was they're happy that we're asking, they're happy that we're asking questions ahead of the time, and then using some of that information there on that as we reopen, reimagine a school for that. I'm also appreciative of the responses because it makes me know that people are listening and wanting to know what our next steps are, and they're actually, everyone is reading our district communications. And so, you know, I think, you know, through this, we've tried to be as timely as possible, knowing that there are just times when we were listening and hearing to the governors at the same exact time as our parents were. But I think that our community's been very responsive to answering and helping and assisting through this. Our goal will be to use that information with a larger committee, and then do a very similar thing with breakout rooms and things like that. So that way, we create several plans for that. And then we have about 70 staff members that are interested in being a part of that. And then as a phase two, we are looking to parents to see if they want to hear about it for that. We will be doing town halls, so even if people do not want to actually participate in committee work, they will be able to sign up through Zoom and through our website on town halls around this topic. So as Tim and I text each other today, when is it not going to be busy? Sorry, Tim, I just probably put out 12 more meetings on your calendar for the next, you know, four days.
Thirteen, actually. Everyone that came in, I was RSVP, RSVP, RSVP.
But I think what Tim is going to talk with you about now is really a part of our reopening, reimagining of school, because we have to be ahead of the game and be able to change rapidly, because we're not sure if there are going to be spikes or valleys with the coronavirus in the fall, the winter, et cetera. And we need to be able to, for lack of a better word, pivot through those. And so we've been working with our faculty on that, and I'll let Tim explain that part of reopening, reimagining school.
So I'm going to share my screen with you really quickly, just so you can kind of see what I'm referring to here. But one of the big things that the teachers have been focusing on, are you able to see that pivot plan?
Yeah.
So we've been saying the word pivot quite, we've been saying the word pivot quite a bit over the last couple of weeks. The teachers are probably tired of hearing it. But I have to say that the work that's been going on around our transition planning for the fall has been really, really great, and people have taken to it very quickly. Again, I always have to thank our team, especially Jerelyn Stolato with her work on this, and, you know, our principals and instructional teacher leaders leading the work with the grade levels. But what we decided we needed to do is we needed to create kind of a uniform plan for all teachers K through 12, all subject areas, so that if there is a situation in the fall where we either quickly have to move from in-person instruction to at-home instruction, even if it's such short term, that we have a plan in place that parents get proactively at the beginning of the school year so that they know, if this happens, here's where you'll find all the information. So you can see on this first page, it's just kind of basic information. What is their communication policy? How will students have access? Again, we've really moved one-to-one, K through 12. We did a really great job of making sure that we got technology in the hands of families that needed it. And I have to thank our technology department and our tech Uber, especially Alex Spada, who really, really enjoyed delivering Chromebooks. He did, he actually looked forward to kind of getting out, and he had all his route down. You know, but we go through, what is the structure of learning going to be? What online platforms are you going to be using? When can families expect to get assignments weekly from the teachers? You know, will it be on Sunday evenings? Will it be first thing Monday morning? What apps will our kids be using? And then we go down and we say, you know, please review the following recommended minutes per day for each subject area. You know, what will the structure and format of daily, weekly lessons look like? What is the attendance expectation for Google meets? What are due dates for work to be handed in? How will we expect participation? And then, very importantly, what does assessment, feedback, and evidence of learning and grading look like during learning at home? So those are all things that the teachers have been working on for the last couple of weeks, and especially the last three days of the school year, the grade levels got together. Teachers were able to individualize these plans for their own classroom, but there was a lot of it that was really over the grade level and over the subject area. It did not have to be a big stressful thing, and the teachers really came at it in a proactive way. I'm really proud of the work that they've done and how quickly they've pivoted to this kind of new way of thinking about instruction. And so, you know, Jerelyn and I kind of divided and conquered, as we often do, and we were able to go into grade level and department meetings with folks and answer their questions. And, you know, people want to do this right, and I think that's the thing that came through the most to me is they don't want to overwhelm our families, they want to make sure that they're focusing on the most important, and they want to do it right. So I'm really excited. All of our principals have shared folders with the pivot plans. We can access them very quickly if we need to. And we can continue to tweak them as we, as we work through and as we figure out if it works or not. And that's one of the things we told teachers was, this is not something that's set in stone. This is something that, as we figure out what's best practice, we can shift it if we need to. So that's been the focus of our instructional and curriculum work, really over the last two weeks. You know, the other item on the agenda that I have to talk about is summer curriculum, which is something that we talk about all the time every year at this time. We are having summer curriculum work. In fact, we've probably had more requests for summer curriculum work now than ever before. You know, people are really focused on two things. We don't want to lose the momentum of moving forward on the work that we were doing before. We closed down, that's really important for us, but we also need to spend time continuing to tweak and plan what we're going to do in this new world that we're living in. So I'm working with the principals right now on finalizing those summer curriculum plans. And it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a busy summer, as always.
Thanks, Mr. Dawkins, and I thank all of the people on that work. I like that you say it's a work in progress. I think, you know, as we close out the year and we celebrate, you know, we had to go to remote learning in 24 hours, and that's just what it was. It was remote. It was on the fly. How do we provide as much professional development as possible while we're living it? And how do we support our families along the way? And knowing that we don't know where the highs and lows will be next year, we need to make sure we move from a remote learning to a blended hybrid model. Not to say that we're starting the year with that, we could be starting the year completely in person, we just don't know yet, it's too soon to tell. But at any given moment, we want to make sure we can transition smoothly to whatever model we need to do based on if there are any spikes in our area. And we want parents to know that we've been thoughtful about this, and they won't have to wonder or fear that we're not ready for any of these transitions. And it doesn't matter what the model is, we want to be ready. And our teachers have definitely stepped up to the challenge of that, of that piece in there. I can tell you, Tim and I ran our instructional teacher leader meeting for the first time through on this. And just as you have to be happy with your highs, I would say that meeting was definitely one of our lows, because we knew what we wanted in our head, but how do you get other people's minds around a pivot plan model? So we paused, we regrouped, and then we came back together. And I do think that, you know, the teachers and what the work that they did around this definitely helped us reframe it for everyone. So it definitely takes everyone, helping everyone during these times.
Thank you, Christine and Tim. Did there, any member have anything they wish to bring in terms of board discussion at this point in time?
I, if I can, I would just like to say thank you to, you know, all of our faculty, staff, and administration for all of the work that they, I know that they're putting into, you know, returning to some sort of instruction, whatever it looked like in the fall. I kind of have a front row seat of what that involves, and it is a lot. And as a parent, I wanted to, I think you did a really nice job with the survey. You said like 900 people turned that in, is that what you said, Christine?
Yeah, 959. We just went up three more as we were in this meeting, so.
It was really well done. I feel like it was simple and straightforward, yet it seemed to touch on, you know, a lot of different important areas. And then if you didn't feel the right question was asked, you had that little portion where you could just kind of share any concerns you might have, and I think that people want to be asked. And I think, I just think it was a really a good idea, so, you know, kudos to you all for that.
Thanks.
If I could echo Lisa's comments as well, I just can't speak anymore highly about how well our staff's stepped to the plate. And in addition to the work that our folks in food service did preparing, if I understood correctly, Christine, over 20,000 meals were put out with the volunteers under Jody Sheldon and Missy Smith. Jody doing volunteering work for getting the people to get the meals out, and Missy Smith working with daycare and BOSEs. In addition to all that other hard work. You talk about the proverbial team effort. Everybody did step to the plate and did a wonderful job, and I thank you, thank them for that. I also wish to thank every board member that participated in our, in our little video. I greatly appreciate it, and I think it spoke volumes to how we feel about the community and how they rallied around to support their students in the school district, and I thank you for that.
Mr. Elder, do you want to do a roll call on comments, just to make sure we hit everybody?
I sure will. Dr. Dawson?
Thank you. Did I unmute? I actually had three things. I just want to echo what Lisa and Bill said. And also, I appreciate you including the faculty, the staff, everybody in the community, the food service. I think they've just been a monumental effort. Also, I'm grateful to the community for the opportunity to serve on the Board of Ed again. Grateful for the opportunity by being reelected, so thank you for that. Two other quick comments. I had a community member reach out to me with concerns about the fact that they understood that the literacy position was, the literacy coach position was eliminated due to budgetary needs, but just had some concerns about some of the work that has been building, and particularly in the high schools, some of the progress that has been happening. So I'll recap to Christine and to Tim, just to follow up on that. They were really eager to see some of the momentum keep going and interested in hearing about how some of the district's resources can be, you know, put to those efforts. And then the last thing I just want to mention is I appreciate the reading of the letter of concern from our community member and the district statement around anti-racist and anti-racism efforts. I think it's a particularly difficult time right now when we're dealing with COVID and all of the tenuous and uncomfortable and uncertain things that that brings up. At the same time, we're also dealing with the trauma, national trauma associated with systemic racism. So one of the things that I'm eager to continue to talk about as a board and as a district, especially as you talked about, Christine, connecting like the safety, and we talk a lot about trauma-informed care, and we know that trauma associated with racism is intense. And it's not just intense for the students who are experiencing it directed at them, but it's debilitating to everyone. So I'm eager to continue conversations, especially, and I'm wondering if there may even be opportunities during some of the summer curriculum writing to think about some of these things. Some of the questions that I'm seeing posed nationally with curriculum right now are questions about whose story gets told in our curriculum? Whose lens is privileged, like through whose eyes are these stories told? Whose voices are highlighted and whose voices are silenced? And so I'm eager to continue those conversations as a district and to take, you know, to partner in that work. Thank you.
So can I just respond to Dr. Dawson on that piece, Mr.? So we actually have a, we actually have a PD going on this summer that's being run by two of our teachers on the young adult book called, this book is anti-racist. And it's going to be a study that they're going to lead, and it's going to go over several weeks in the summer a handful of teachers are participating in so that they can start talking about developing anti-racist discussions and building that work into curriculum at the ELA level and actually any subject area that it's open to all, teachers of all subject areas. So that's going to be beginning hopefully in July, depending on when the book, the book is, has run out. The publisher ran out of copies, so they're reprinting it. So whenever it becomes available, you know, we are having that discussion kind of in pockets. And so that'll be one of the topics that we'll be talking about as we discuss things with the Idles over the summer.
Thank you.
From my perspective, one thing I'd like to bring up is that I want to compliment you, Christine and Tim, for conducting a very fun-filled end-of-year closing ceremony this past Thursday. And I believe it was a 300-plus people were able to attend virtually, and it was well received based on the comments I saw floating across the screen. Now, withstanding the hijinks that you put together to share with the people. But I thank you for that, and another good job. I think it's literally on, each year you have another thing to figure out how to top what you did the year before, so good luck for next year. Thank you. Mr. Farrell?
Bill, we'll have to share with everyone our Google Meet
Yes.
that we did, so that way they can understand what you're talking about.
Yes, please do. It was just hilarious. Mr. Farrell?
I guess I just wanted to share that this afternoon, I got a phone call from NISBA doing a survey for my interest in the upcoming convention. And it doesn't look like they're going to have it happen this year. They're looking to do it in a virtual environment. Well, my first answer was, no, I have no intention of going to New York City in October in the midst of what might be a big deal around 3,000 people. And they said, yeah, that's the going information. But this provides us an opportunity. I think I mentioned it the last time we were talking amongst ourselves, that some of our members here on the board who've not been able to take the time off to go and really get involved with some of these workshops that they offer, I would strongly encourage, if this goes virtual, and it looks like it is, that some of you folks consider signing up for, because they can be very, very informational and obviously, it'd be interesting to see how they put together the maybe web apps or however they present it. But keep that in mind, and I'm sure there'll be more to come. That's all I'm going to share.
Thank you, Jen. Good information. Mr. Fidelli?
Yeah, I would like to start first by thanking the community for over 4,000 people voting, because I've been on the board a while now, and I've never had that kind of voter turnout. And I appreciate the overwhelming support, so thank you for that. Congratulations to my colleagues for the reelection. I appreciate what you do. And I do have a kind of a question and a comment. It echoes a lot what Dr. Dawson was saying, that I'm a little, I'm watching our literacy that I'm a little, I'm watching our literacy program, K-12, a little more carefully than I think I ever have before, especially as a science guy. You know, I'm the first to tell you, I'm not a literacy expert. But I know we have now reassigned our K-6 person back to the classroom. Wendy Myers has retired. She was not replaced with a literacy person. And I'm just concerned that we may be eroding it a little too much. I don't want to continue programs simply because we always have. If we have data that says it's been ineffective or that there are better ways to do it, I'm on board, I'm a numbers guy, I want to see those numbers. But I just, I would like to make people aware that, you know, I at least am starting to watch a little more closely about what we're doing with literacy, K-12, because it matters, and it matters a lot. So, that's my piece. Thank you.
I'll be happy to share a couple of things, or Tim Ken, in the Friday report with a couple of that that we've been trying to track, starting right now as our baseline, and then going from there.
Ms. Hogan? Are you good?
I'm good. I think I said all I needed to, other than I probably should thank the community as well. And I'm excited about serving for another three years. It's been, we've had some exciting years, so I don't know that they'll be as exciting, but I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you.
Ms. Henkel?
I just wanted to say thank you to those who helped put on the fifth grade graduations and the UPK. I know Jerilyn did a lot of work for UPK. And I attended the Harrison Ave fifth grade graduation and the virtual UPK graduation. And they were fabulous, and my children just really appreciated it. So, thank you very much for everybody that helped put those on.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yeah, just same thing, echo a lot of what everybody else has said is, you know, thank you, thanks to the community for their support and the tremendous showing that we had. It's been unprecedented in my tenure. But also want to say thanks to Tim and Christine for the moving up ceremony at the rec. It was really, it was really well done. And I think everybody appreciated it very much. And I really respect you guys for being out there in that hot weather and working through that, because it was definitely a steamer. But it was well worth it, and sincerely as a parent, thank you very much. It was really a great, great time. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Ostrander?
Yes. Well, talking about the community, we've all been there for quite a while. However, I'm more impressed with our superintendent and her direct staff on a successful year. If you think about it, I've been waiting, waiting, and waiting for something to pop, and it went smooth. We couldn't, we were very fortunate, very lucky. And I think she's doing an excellent job with her staff. And it shows in this time that we're in on how quiet it is. Congratulations, Christine.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm a little worried when you say you're waiting for the other shoe to drop, though. You know, we still have to reopen, okay? Okay, so we still got a long way to go, but we're still going to work at it hard every single day. So I appreciate your backing on that.
Mr. Riggy?
Well, again, what everyone else said. Thank you for everyone to come out and vote positive and get a favorable vote on the budget. I've been doing this for 12 years, I think it's 12 in a row. So, the budgets have passed. And, you know, thank you, thank you for people coming out and supporting us like that. And again, Bill, Christine, and Lisa, thanks for re-upping and keeping the team together. What we're going through, again, it's unprecedented, and it happened boom overnight, that you're in class, bam, you're out of class. And I don't know how you adjust to that. We did, we did the best we could. I think we, you know, tried the best we could. I mean, we probably weren't perfect, but there was no playbook for this, and we just had to make it up as we went along. And I think overall, we've done a good job. A lot of other districts have too. And I'm hoping and praying that when September rolls around, we can have class, we can have everybody back in. I just hope that's the way it works out. And that we can go forward and hopefully get back to the way we were somehow. But again, just thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Jeff. If I may, I'm a bit remiss for now. Thank you to the community for allowing me to serve on the board for another three years. And with a great group of individuals, and I greatly appreciate that. One other comment I'd like to make is that during the counting last week, John Farrell reminded me to, we were live streaming it. For, what'd you say, Jen, Riving TV? I failed to mention, I wish to mention it now, that thanks to all those folks that worked in the counting, Christine and Audrey, you're both there, you went through the whole thing. As you know, we had to stop at 11 o'clock at night. One of the machines went down, and they worked manually doing the counts till about 2:00 or 2:30 the following day. I know that's when Christine said I could come to partake. Lot of hard work. I think there's a lot of laughs that went on, but a lot of hard work by that group of individuals. And I thank them, and I greatly appreciate that. And I know the board does as well. Yeoman work. Thank you. We do need to adjourn to executive session. We have a personnel issue. I have a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion.
That was Kevin, second.
Second from Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. We need a roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fideli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggy?
Yes.
Mr. Elder, before everyone gets off the line, Audrey, do we need to make a motion to make Mr. Elder the clerk? Or are you just back for executive session?
Yes.
I'm the clerk of the works, okay.
You are the clerk.
Would someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Tom makes motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Doc. Mr. Kurtz, mode. Dr. Dawson, second. All in favor? Well.
Nope.
Now, we need to leave for session and move to the other link that was in our calendars. Is that correct? And live streaming will continue until we get back.
Right.
We have to one more roll call.
Goodbye, everyone.
For the motion I just made.
Right. Bill, we need one more roll call vote.
Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fideli?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
He already left for the next meeting.
Yes.
After a link for the next meeting.
Mr. Riggy?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So now we shall leave and join the other session. Thank you.
Bill, I'll stay on this meeting. And so when you're done, just come back into this meeting, and then we can adjourn.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
You guys are quick.
I'd say we want to go home, but we're already there.
That's right.
Until Thursday night?
Roger, you're looking more like you're ready to go to bed. You're making me yawn.
I yawn when I sit.
Yeah, I hear you.
No further business to be conducted. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Did you have a motion to return to open?
We did.
Yes. Who was that?
It was me, I think. Lisa.
Lisa?
Lisa and Roger.
Yep.
You know, it was approved unanimously. Yeah. Who moved it? Did Audrey get the motion in second? Who, first and second?
Yes, Lisa and Roger.
Yeah, but to adjourn the meeting. Who, we had a motion?
I haven't done it. John motion.
John motion and Tim seconded?
Sure.
Okay. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
See you all Thursday night. Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, stop streaming, stop porting.